Okay, let's call the meeting. Do you call them?
Mayor Grossman.
Here.
Councilman Roberts.
Here.
Councilman Weaver.
Here.
Councilman Cooper.
Here.
Councilman Satterfield.
Here.
Okay, we have four present. Um, let's, let's go ahead and consider an act upon our consent items within the minutes in the check register for October.
Hi, I'm speaking to you.
Do you have a motion to accept those?
I will make a motion with yourself at the turn of.
No, I don't want to make a motion.
Have a motion in second, all in favor. Here unanimously. Okay, um, we have, um, actually before we do open forum, I'm going to have, we're going to move up, um, number nine, consider an act upon accepting the 2017-2018 audit. You like to get this moved up front, so.
Appreciate it.
She can move on home after this.
Okay, so, uh, start with the same thing y'all always start with, which is just this letter that's loose in there. Um, I'm gonna try to make it a little bit more brief, because I've seen y'all so much in the past, uh, several months. Um, but management is responsible for financial statements, and we're responsible for conducting an audit and issuing an opinion based on our audit. Um, and to cut to the chase, in our opinion, that, uh, financial statements are fairly presented, so it is a clean audit. Um, accounting estimates are an integral part of your financial statements, and that comes in the form of an allowance for uncollectible taxes, which is just based on kind of historical averages, and I think current, the current uncollectible rate is right at forty-six percent. Um, management's estimate of the useful life of capital assets.
You, you said taxes, you mean, oh.
I'm sorry, fines, fines. Yes. Y'all are like, we have taxes? No, sorry. That's what my friend goes before. But definitely uncollectible fines. Uh, and sitting at forty-six percent is your uncollectible rate there. Uh, management's estimate, uh, estimate of the useful life of capital assets, uh, you just don't know how long capital asset lasts, how long a vehicle will last, or something like that, so it's just an estimate, and, uh, those are depreciated over their estimated useful life, and, um, that estimation of depreciation is on your statement of net asset, on your statement of activities. Uh, difficulties encountered during the audit, we didn't have any difficulties with management or performing or complaining to audit, corrected and uncorrected misstatements, um, and actually there's an error on this, I didn't mean to attach all of the adjustments, the actual only material adjustments that are, um, that I wanted to attach to this, um, are number five and number ten, and that has to do with the uncollectible fines receivable, and, um, also, the amount that you received for your road grant, uh, it was netted against your expenditures, and so, what number, adjustment number ten does, is remove that from the expenditure and actually create a revenue item for that grant, and then, um, reduces, um, or increased your expenditures. So that's what number, number eleven did, and like I said, number five is just for the uncollectible adjustments that, um, needed to be made for the, uh, fines receivable, sorry. Um, management's representations, I actually came over yesterday and had an exit meeting with the mayor, and Mr. Rutledge, and with Doug, and we talked about the financial statements, covered and covered, we went over every single journal entry, with the exception of two, and, um, I did not have them sign the exit meeting memo at that meeting, or the representation letter, because I didn't have that information until today, so, once I gave them the journal entries, I felt comfortable that I had gone over the, with them, that's when I asked them to sign the representation letter, not before I finished giving them all the information. Um, management consultations with other independent accountants, uh, last year y'all had some, um, not really consultations, but you had employed a bookkeeping firm to kind of get your books in order, um, but that's not on this letter anymore, because that didn't apply to this year, so as far as I'm concerned, and as far as I could see, y'all didn't have any kind of consultation with another accountant. Um, another, other audit findings or issues, we did have one finding this year, and it was just because of the journal entry number eleven that I mentioned, um, primarily for that, um, and we created, um, the revenue line item, and re-increased your expenditures because of the road grant, your budget was over budget. So, um, that's just how it is, it just has to be, we've talked about it, um, at length, and I think there is, uh, a process in place, it's gonna be, uh, put, uh, put in place going forward where it didn't happen yet, so. And that is the letter. Now, I did something a little bit different, so that it's a little bit easier for y'all to follow, and I'm not jumping around all over the report. I put a little summary sheet on top of the audit report with page numbers. Uh, on page one is the independent audit report, that report just says that management is responsible for the financial statements, and we're responsible for the audit, just like I mentioned earlier, and that in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated, uh, in all material respects. On page twenty-three, that is your report on compliance and internal control. There were no internal control findings, so that, that means there were no significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, deficiencies that we noted. Um, if you'll remember last year, there were several of those, and they've all been corrected. We did have one instance of non-compliance, which I mentioned, was the budget, um, expenditures exceeding your budget, your final budget numbers, and, um, the finding is noted on At the bottom of page number twenty, uh, twenty-five, so it just says, "The city received grant funds during the year, uh, for road work." The city had resulted expenditures from that grant, and were not budgeted, um, which resulted in accounting, I mean, actual expenditures exceeding final budget amount by three hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars. In addition to cars were purchased for public safety, and were not budgeted. I saw in the minutes where that was approved, y'all had approved the vehicle purchases, it's just there's one farther step, where you just say, okay, we want to increase our budget in that area. Um, and the revenue for, you know, the road grant covered the road grant expenditures, so, um, if you look at page twenty-one, that's your budget, and you actually were, your actual expenditures exceeded total revenues by four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty thousand of it was that road grant, um, but the rest of it was just, you know, in general, y'all got more revenues than you anticipated. With your total expenditures, um, yes. No, you're fine. Um, also, um, the total expenditures on this budget, I mean, on this report, are seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, if you also remember, there's the next page where it kind of reconciles this budget number to your, um, exhibit number four, which has your revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. On this budget, we removed the court costs that are associated with the state, because y'all don't budget for that, it's an in and out, it's not really, y'all don't consider it revenue, so I've taken it off of this, and it's not a factor in your budget. So your total expenditures, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, but your final budgeted expenditures were four hundred and six thousand, so, which brought you to three hundred and eighty-six thousand over budget. I will say that it was, you know, fully covered by revenues that you had already had, um, in fact, your change in fund balance was seventy-one thousand one hundred and six, you increased your fund balance by that amount. So now your total fund balance is four hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty-five. Um, let's see, last year, your increase in fund balance was about fourteen thousand, and reminder, this year it's seventy-one thousand, so that's a good kind of comparison. And then in addition to that, kind of hang with me, um, if the road grant expenditures are removed from your total expenditures, um, and you kind of simulate a normal year, then you have approximately seven months of operating expenditures in your total fund balance, so if you did not collect another dime for any revenue sources, and you just kept your revenue, your expenditures at a normal rate without the road grants, uh, road grant expenditures in there, you have seven months of operating expenditures. Um, when you take into account only the unassigned fund balance, and not any of the restricted fund balance for municipal court, for technology, for all those things, um, you only have about three months of operating expenditures, which is still good, because best practices say about three to six months of unassigned fund balance for your operating expenditures. Does anybody have any questions? Sorry.
Let's not include the CDs, does it?
The what?
CDs.
The CDs, right, right, because that's considered the restricted, that's part of that restricted money, so the unassigned is, I've under a hundred and eighty-five thousand on exhibit three.
So the three CDs are not counted in?
No, they're not counted in that.
Well, they should, they should be unrestricted, really, with the exception of the emergency.
Well, and that, maybe it is, if that's, if it's, the restricted, uh, let me look, it's exhibit four.
They have been in the past anyway, but they're unrestricted. Even the emergency component is.
Okay, right, it is unrestricted, it's just committed, y'all decided to commit that, so it is un, it's not unassigned, but it is, it is a commitment.
But it's not shown in that, in that figure?
It is not shown.
In the three-month figure that you just.
It is not shown in that three-month figure, you're correct. The restricted and the committed are taken out, the unassigned is the only one, so we've got restricted for roads, technology, building, security, municipal court, and, uh, municipal court is significant, a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in there, committed for emergency, that CD that y'all have committed there is about forty-one thousand, four thousand, forty thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, and unassigned, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, seven hundred and ninety-three, but that's the three months, yes.
For those that are not aware, our year actually starts July the first and ends on June thirty.
Yeah, all of this is as of June thirty.
Yep. For the first time, we're actually current on calendar.
It's like all, so y'all can see.
Yeah, I would like to say that, um, uh, we appreciate everything that you've done for us, she's helped us on the last three audits, and the, the two before this were nightmares, and, um, really do appreciate you, she is not gonna continue, be able to continue to do our audits in the future, uh, just because of the workload that she has.
It is, it's, it's too much, and I really, uh, I appreciate y'all being so patient, because it has been, it's been a sacrifice to, just to try to get it done, as, you know, timely, or not timely as it has been done, so.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just wanted to also say, a lot of times when, um, auditors change over, cities, school boards, you know, they don't know who to talk to in between that time, because they're like, well, I don't really want to talk to the old auditor, but we don't really have a new one yet, talk to me, if something happens, ask me questions, I'll be happy to answer anything that you have, because I don't want y'all to get in a bind, just because you don't know who to talk to, because I'm, I'm fully aware and can talk to y'all about anything, so.
Well, we appreciate that, and we do have you on speed titles.
Yes, I can answer the phone too, right Doug?
All right, do y'all have any questions for her on this? Okay, all right, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Drive safe.
Appreciate it.
Oh, thanks.
I do, I do.
That's fine, thank you.
Well, that's what, uh, what, what I put the plans are, uh, we're gonna start looking at maybe find two or three people to have y'all, um, think about, and we'll put it on an agenda and vote which one we want to use.
We'll talk to Maryville, and Frankston, and other around, see who they're using.
And actually, Doug has already done some preliminary calling, so he's already working on it, so, uh, we'll have something, probably not till January or February, council meeting. Okay, we need to, um, on number nine, we need to consider an act upon accepting, I need a motion to accept that.
Motion to accept. Well, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor. Here is unanimously. Okay, now we'll go back up to open forum, is there anybody that has anything they'd like to say in open forum?
Anybody?
No.
Okay, um, thank you, and so, let's go down the list, number seven, swear in Officer Cody Welch as a new police reserve. Now come forward and, Miss Sadya, swear in.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Cody Welch.
I, Cody Welch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the peace office, of the office of peace officer.
Of the office of peace officer.
To the city of Coffee City.
To the city of Coffee City.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Reserve, protect.
Serve, protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of this city.
Of this city.
And I furthermore solemnly swear.
And I furthermore solemnly swear.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly paid.
Or indirectly paid.
Offered or promised to pay.
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Nor promised to contribute.
Nor promised to contribute.
Any money.
Any money.
Or valuable thing.
Or valuable thing.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
As a reward.
As a reward.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, there's chief, uh, would you kind of say a couple of things where, uh, Mr. Welch comes from, and.
Bosses.
Some family members.
Bosses.
You want me to fill in chief?
Actually, I don't have his file with me, because that's, like, I actually have, uh, I'm like eight or nine applicants right now that I'm going through, and I know he's new to this career, but Mr. Welch can fill in on the rest.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Welch, tell us where you're coming from and that.
I'm from Trenton, Texas, grew up there my whole life, Zepanee County, uh, graduated from high school there shortly after joining the Marine Corps, uh, got out of the Marine Corps, and been doing armed security, and getting into police work now, so.
Okay, great. Thanks, good to have you, and I understand you have a brand-new little baby.
Yes, three-month-old son, late.
Three weeks.
Or, yeah, three weeks.
Just seems like three months.
Yes.
Well, we welcome y'all, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, number eight, let's look at the holiday and events calendar, um, kind of listed a little different this year, I put, did the holidays up top, and then, the events, we have different events throughout the year, that sometimes I think we wait till the last minute to kind of start talking about, and maybe if we have them early in the year, we can, maybe think better than some of these holidays, um, these events and stuff, and plan a little better for them. One of them, um, that kind of talked about with the fire department, was doing a Halloween something here at Coffee City, and so if y'all have other events or something that you think would be good, or for us to, um, add to this, you know, we can do that throughout the year, of course, but these were just some of the things I wanted to put on there. Um, and then the holiday schedule is the same that we had last year, basically, the same, we had fourteen last year, we've got the same fourteen this year, um, I don't know if y'all want to stick with that, you want to change anything, if you've looked them over in the comments.
I would like to take Martin Luther King Day off.
Okay. Um, do you have a reason or do?
Yeah, fourteen, uh, fourteen holidays is excessive amount.
Okay.
What was Athens, do we know? Part of Athens?
Athens gets in okay, don't they?
This is pretty much the.
This is it, with the exception of one, and I don't, I think it's one of the Christmas holidays, we added a.
No, it's Columbus Day, I think.
It's what?
Columbus.
Columbus Day? Because I know last year, I thought we added a day at Christmas, uh, Columbus Day, okay.
And we have three days at Christmas. We didn't have it last year, did we?
Yeah, we added one last year. We had talked last year about doing away with Martin Luther King Day, and asked if they would like it a different time in the year, and so they added, I think, the day either before Christmas or after Christmas, depending on how it fell, and then, um, we kept Martin Luther King Day as well, so. How do y'all want to talk about it, feel about it?
Oh, I just assume if it's, if this is what Athens has, I just assume leave it alone, you know, don't want to offend anybody, people are happy with Martin Luther King Day, fourteen days seems to be excessive, I went over it last year, why rock vote, leave it alone.
Okay.
I guess I could just leave it in long, I mean, I understand where church kind of, I mean, I was coming from.
Do you want me to ask any of the employees?
What do you think, Doug?
To tell you the truth, it doesn't matter to me if you take off, Martin Luther King Day.
Are the banks closed on Martin Luther King Day?
Yes.
Close doors closed, yes.
Columbus Day is too, so, I mean, you know, to me, banks closed, mail's, mail's shut down, it's.
That's right.
Kind of a, but anyway, um, more discussion?
They cover.
The what, the police department?
If they will have some.
The police and fire department is never shut down. Ever.
No, my, I'm, my thinking is, I mean, you got New Year's Day, January the first, and then twenty days later, you get another day off, I just.
You should work for the state of Texas.
Yeah, I don't. I get every day off.
They get Chavez Day, they get Confederate Day, they get, Texas became the state day.
We're not discussing more ideas.
Okay, well, uh, I need a motion, uh, how, who, we've had discussion, you kind of said what you want to do, so we'll take a vote, but I need a motion to accept this, accept it with changes, table it, whatever, need a motion.
Well, I, I make a motion, and we just leave it as it is.
Well, sorry.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to leave it as it is, all in favor. All opposed. Don't get to do a tiebreaker, okay? Okay, it was three to one. Okay. Okay, that was supposed to be an easy one. Okay, we've done number nine, number ten, we have budget review, okay, budget review, um, we're gonna make it quick on this budget review, because, the reason I say that is, um, I, I hope y'all have had a little chance to look this over, where we're standing after four months into the year, uh, we are going to make a couple of changes to our budget, amend our budget, uh, I'm not gonna do that till January, because December's not a good time to do anything, so, uh, in January, what we learned from the audit is, um, I think on our budget now, we do have, have it budgeted for a new car, but we're also going to be buying another car, and it's going to be paid for from insurance proceeds, but we have to have it budgeted that we're buying two cars, not just one car, so we have, that's one example of where we're gonna have to amend, and so I think some of the others might be in our revenue. We're not gonna change, um, we're not gonna really change the outcome of how much we're spending, it's just a matter of auditing and the bookkeeping part of it, to show where the revenue comes in, where the expenses are going out, so when you do expend it, it's in your budget that you've expended it. Uh, so anyway, with that being said, we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more in January, but, um, overall, right now, you can see the percentages out to the right, um, we should be at about thirty-three percent of our income and our expenditures, and we're falling slightly short on our sales tax, we're at thirty point four eight percent, should be thirty-three, so not too terribly bad, um, we're, um, a little bit under on our court, on our court income, uh, we made up a big difference with, uh, Net Data coming onboard, this is the first month they've reported, and so that, that's helped out a little bit, um, and then our in-house warrants are just slightly below, not too good, um, everything else is pretty much on the franchise fees, those are quarterly, so those percentages don't reflect necessarily the correct, you know, and then on our expenses, um, you'll notice the technology fund was very high, but we expected that, um, again, I'm going to amend the budget for that, because we budgeted seven thousand four hundred dollars, which is the amount that we budgeted to take in, but we also knew that we were gonna spend, um, about eleven thousand on this Net Data system that we have for the court software system, so I'm, I'm gonna add that as a line item expense, and then put, put it up here in the income, or take it from the tech fund available balance, or something like that, so. Uh, Doug, what else? Y'all have any that particularly speak out to you, or whatever, um?
I do think that needs to come out of the checks line.
The available tech.
Yeah.
Balance, yes, I agree, but we will put that as income or something. On the community center, I attached a worksheet there, uh, we are, we now have it rented to this church group that is coming quite often, and so that is helping out on us, I mean, we don't expect to make money on the community center, but I certainly would like to at least break even, and, um, we're getting a little closer now, I think, we did have a, um, we had one month, if you look at the electric, in August, we had one month that something went haywire with our electrical system over there, and it was out of proportion, and we couldn't, we couldn't talk the electric company out of it, and they said it's something within our wiring, or something was going off, so, it's been corrected, or, it's not happened again, let me put it that way.
It's being closely monitored.
Being closely monitored.
Was anything left running all the time?
No, it was not left running, because we have a, matter of fact, after that happened, but it had, it was going on, uh, every Monday now, because it's usually rented on the weekends, every Monday, the employees take a separate turn of, going over and checking certain things, that the water's not running, toilets aren't running, the electric, the air conditioner heaters turned down or up, and just stuff like that, to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
The other thing is, we're monitoring every week, we have the way to go online and look at our electric uses per day, and we monitor that every week now, so.
They kind of show it on a little graph bar, you know, of how much you're using, so you know if it spikes or something, so, okay.
Isn't that, like, eighty-four hundred dollars in the first month, I'm like, that's good.
Yeah, that's good. That's good, um, I hope, I hope we do that again for November. Do y'all have any other questions on any of the expenses, or where we are on anything, or? And anytime y'all have questions on any of this, of course, feel free to come and talk to me, or Doug, or. Hi, Bill.
I said you did take one that we talked about out there, didn't you?
What's that?
I don't remember.
Yeah.
It was a big number, though.
Okay, well, um, the, all we were gonna do, we don't have to act upon this or anything, so, if y'all are okay with that, let's move on. That's my, um, okay, budget review. Okay, uh, number eleven, I have discussed an act upon patrolling the ETJ, um, I'm bringing this up because, um, we have been asked, actually, by, by Briarwood Bay and by Lollipop, to, um, not necessarily patrol their areas like they patrol the city of Coffee City, but to just drive through there occasionally, once, once a day or something, you know, whereas they monitor all of our, um, businesses, and, um, our county roads several times throughout the day, they would probably do one or two drive-bys through those areas, just to show a police presence, um, we don't have really jurisdiction there, it's the county, and, um, and if I'm saying something out of place, please correct me, if, if, and if you want to add something, I'll give you a chance here and set, um, but, um, a lot of, I'm just gonna say, crime, drugs and crime are going on in a couple of these neighborhoods, and if it's there, it's gonna filter into Coffee City, and I think it doesn't hurt to bear watching over there, I don't know that it's costing us any more money to drive those few streets or whatever, so I would, I don't know, I would propose that we be okay with them patrolling that, would you like to speak and say something, the advantage of why you want to do it, or?
Um, when I took.
Sorry, I caught you off-guard there on that, apologize.
When I took oath to be an officer, the whole thing was to protect the community, anybody else I could, you know, we have a small road that comes through that goes to Briarwood Bay, so, we do know there's a lot of trafficking going on into the bay, I'll start with the bay, and, uh, we don't have much to catch them with enough PC in that little stretch of road before they get into Briarwood, once they get into Briarwood, we don't know nothing, once they come out, they have to, what, maybe twenty seconds and they're out of here, so, by seeing a car that comes in here, and we can just drive through there, show our presence, we can actually pick up rob calls when we have something, and we're just trying to deter the crime activity. If they see us in there, maybe they'll start pulling further away from Coffee City, and then. If they see us in there, maybe they'll start pulling further away from Coffee City, and they can play safer. Same thing for Lollipop. Not to enforce the law, just to go in and show our presence. We've been doing it once a day, every time, we'll go a couple of times through the bay. But for the most part, it's been one time throughout Lollipop, and, um, they haven't had any trouble there. When I talked to the homeowners association, at that meeting, they haven't had any trouble there. That they were more than welcome and glad that if we could drive by there, just to show our presence. Uh, I have a letter here that I forgot to give you on time, excuse me for that, I apologize. This is from the president of the, as well as, um, Lollipop, who, who given us a lesson saying, hey, with mine, and again, Henderson County takes care of those calls. Henderson County takes care of those calls. We had a, a urinal abatement, and they called us, we just went in there and held the fort down. But then again, we just, we're just trying to show officer presence, keep the drug activity down.
What's the county's, uh, what, what, what's the county's say about this?
Uh, Sheriff Boe, yeah, and I said, right, he is fine. The chief captain is, I just don't think, they're fine with that. They're more than, they're glad that we can offer some help and assistance, being that sheriff or the chief said that most of their calls on the west side of the county, so by the time they get here, they're looking at minimum thirty-five minutes. And, uh, they said that they were fine, if you wanna go in there and drive, they have no problem.
How's that gonna impact Coffee City as far as actually patrolling here and having people, you know, at businesses? Just the standard police work that you guys do?
As far as the impact? Nor the, the crime, I mean, is that what, am I understanding the question?
So I don't, I guess I'm saying, if you're having people patrol those areas, how much time is that taking out of patrolling in Coffee City?
Okay, okay, no, I see.
Well, say like in a eight or ten hour, ten hour shifts for the reserves.
Since we do ten hour shifts, we'll take a couple of drives through there. We don't, Briarwood has a lot of roads. We just take a couple where we know that there's high drive, high crime activity. We're well aware of some houses that are dealing or transporting. We drive through there, uh, we, we know a couple of spots where they rendezvous and pass, you know, their, whatever they're passing, one car to another, and then they take off. Or we do wanna just drive into a couple of those areas, come back out, we see a car in there, we take it, make the note, when we see that car come out, when we're back in Coffee City, that's where we come in.
And what's the policy gonna be if, if you had a patrolman in an area, and he sees something going down? What does he do?
Well, as, as a law enforcement officer, you have to intervene, life or death, uh, property, we have to stop the crime before it's committed.
Even though we don't have-
Even though we have jurisdiction, we don't have jurisdiction, we have to prevent a crime.
Could I say something about the jurisdiction? I think that's a, kind of a funky word, because these officers are licensed in the state of Texas. They can enforce law in the state of Texas. It's not really, Coffee City is the area, is like Henderson County is an area, there's areas, but anybody can enforce the law, you know? Henderson County can come in here and write you a ticket, even though you're inside Coffee City.
Sure, man, but can he go to Austin and write a ticket? Now-
Yes.
Sure, if somebody there is breaking the law.
What we, what we do is-
He's probably not gonna write a ticket, but he's probably going to, um, uh, stop a, a crime, or this is something that's, you know, burglary or something like that.
I've been in other towns where there was a regular driver on the highway, going in and out, speeding, braking, and, and, and it was endangering two other people. And the traffic was heavy that day. Then I did stop the car and called the nine-one-one, whoever's, whatever jurisdiction I was in, to explain to what was going on. Then they come, if they wanna take over, they take over, if they say no, just let them go, then we just let them go. But we make sure they're okay. If we see a crime about to happen, we intervene. If they felt the signal in Austin, I'm not gonna touch you, 'cause that's not a matter of life or death.
And we know how much of Briarwood Bay is actually in RET?
Uh, I think it's, uh, well, the, the Valley View all the way back to the very far end, or midway to the very end.
Valley View is really all, yeah, the part of Valley View is all that's actually in Coffee City limits, the rest of it is ETJ.
Yeah, I was gonna say, all of the bay is in the ETJ.
Even over there by the park?
Sunrise Shores is in our ETJ, part of Sunrise Shores. It goes a half mile out.
I'm looking at the agenda and it says ETJ, so.
Well, I, I've said ETJ, just so it would cover ETJ, not necessarily just Briarwood Bay, or just Lollipop. It is, what if, you know, what if they're following somebody that's acting kind of suspicious or whatever? They don't really have a PC yet to stop them, but they go into Sunrise Shores. Would y'all have a problem with him following them into Sunrise Shores? And, you know, as long as it's staying within the ETJ.
And we've heard from, from some of the people that we have arrested, they're like, that drive into there from Coffee City, but by the time we catch them, they're trying to get into their houses and park, and they actually get to their house, and we found a couple for evading, but they try and get away from us and say, look, you can't do nothing, we're in here. Well, you know, that's not the point, you know, we caught you over here, but nonetheless, we still have to prevent a crime. And then we, you know, come up with drug arrests, evading, area relative, armed or dangerous people that have come through Coffee City. But by the time I can catch up to them, the traffic's not so, so thick. If the traffic is thick, by the time we catch up to them, they're already in the bank. And then that's where they're like, well, you can't touch us. But again, it's just to prevent a crime, even though some of the problem calls was committed in the Coffee City limits.
And would you say, out of the eight or ten hour day shift, how much time of that are you spending in the ETJ?
I'd say less than an hour, less, probably forty-five minutes. 'Cause all we have to do is go in there, the government's come out, and that's where everything's at. It takes longer when we stop someone, or we have a reason to be detained there by someone. Um, like, the last incident we had was two, two gentlemen that were parked in a house, this is private property. We, we know, I know that they don't belong there. I know it's an empty lot, but I checked out with them anyway. Turns out they're unwanted, they said the reason we parked here is 'cause of the truck didn't start, the batteries didn't. Well, when I went and turned it on, it started fine. But that area was known, the house next to it, and the other one is known for the meth activity of delivering. But then again, that's doing my job, preventing a crime before it happens, which is suspicious activity. Not to mention they have weapons.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I think it, just basically getting the wording, I want you to do your job. And, but I really don't like the wording, because the, the fact that it says, patrolling the ETJ. I would like for you to do your job, and it sounds like you're doing a wonderful thing. But that's why I dragged you out the map, because when the fire chief mentioned, yes, I'm very sure, is there in our ETJ? Well, by lordy, we got a bunch, because of the way this line is drawn, we got a lot of ETJ. I would like for you to do your job, but I don't think I would like to put in the wording that we're gonna do it, that we're going to sanction patrolling all of our ETJ, 'cause I think we'd be just cutting, I think we'd be sticking our head in meat grinder. I don't think you have to, I don't think your police department's big enough for that.
That's my concern.
Well, would y'all like to limit it to Briarwood Bay?
No, I think he'd do his job. I think, I, I don't, I, I think he's doing fine. I think we should just sort of leave it alone and let him do, because you've already said, that as a, uh, police officer in the state of Texas, that he has a right to do this particular job. I don't think he needs any kind of authorization from the city council to do anything. But I, I, I don't wanna put this ETJ in there, because what that would do is, now we're, we're responsible for Brown's Landing, now we're responsible for stuff on three fifteen, now we're responsible for that, because the city council said ETJ. And because that's what the city council said, no, no, I'm not voting for ETJ. I want you to do your job, but I'm not gonna say ETJ.
I think what it needs to be, just where we've had requests.
Yeah, you know, you're doing a fine job, we're just leaving alone, but, but putting, having a city council on it.
The whole thing.
So just let them do their job, as long, as long as there's a need somewhere, you'll take it, and if there's nothing, you don't need it there.
Does that tell, I, I think we'd just be asking, by law, one week to choose.
Okay, um.
You got any thoughts, sir? Oh, God, I need to get mine.
That's twice.
Say twice, okay, put me down.
Mayor Pan, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If these are requested services from these, it, would there not be some kind of offset reimbursement? I, I know, I want him to do his job too, and I know Briarwood Bay very well, you know, uh, but it seems to me like if there is any more engagement.
I, I wanna say, I don't wanna get into where we get reimbursed for something like that, because then you're contracting your services out.
Yeah, we have liability then, too.
Yeah, to me, then you, you're, you know, they're paying for a service and whatever, and we're, we're not really selling our police department.
No, no, we're not.
I mean, I, I don't want it to be, now, if they wanna donate some money, they wanna donate to do or whatever, I'm all okay with that. But I don't want, as a city, for us to charge another little, like Diamond Head Bay, for example, they're not in the city either, but I'm sure we drive down there and, once a day, if the gate's open, you know? But I don't think it's appropriate for us to, without some sort of interlocal agreement or something with them, or whatever, I don't think that would be appropriate for the city to do that. Um, because then you get into, okay, we're gonna, we, we wanna pay your police X number of dollars. Well, how many hours are you gonna get over there?
Well, I, well, I guess it's city services. You know, city services, that's what, how I kinda see it, city area, offering city services in an area.
I, I can't offer city services to people that are not in the city, not in the city. You know, then I can't offer services that are paid for, that, that's not within the city.
And, and I'm kinda with Dawn, I don't think we really, as a council, have to vote on this, if he's already got the, the request from them in writing from the different areas.
He already has the authority as a Texas police officer, he already has interlocal agreement there, and for us to commit to this is, we would be committing.
Yeah, we would be putting ourselves at, at some risk.
We don't wanna do that, unless y'all disagree with me.
So would it, well, no, you, or do we put-
No, we don't, we're just table.
No, we're not gonna table it, means you bring it up at another agenda, we just need to dispose of it, we just need to say, um-
Leave it alone.
I, uh-
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to leave the status quo or something.
I'll say, no.
We have a motion to leave a status quo by Phil Runledge and a motion by Terry Cooper, all in favor. Motion carries one hundred percent.
Now, does that mean they can still do it?
Yeah.
They can still drive through there?
Yes.
But not the, the-
Not the whole thing, if, 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 if.
Why not just take on half the county?
Okay, okay, excellent. Number twelve, it's gonna get better. Discuss and act upon allowing the police to use tasers if they have been qualified to do so. This was discussed some time ago, however, the former police chief never made changes to the department policy. I would like to re-discuss this issue. Uh, this was brought up to me, um, by two different people that, um, they would prefer, if they are qualified to use a taser, would prefer to pull their taser before they pulled their gun. And, um, I would like for y'all to discuss that and see how y'all feel on that issue.
How many do we have that are qualified?
One, two, three, four, five, or six of us. But since, sorry, I'm just gonna say five of us right now.
Previous council meeting, when we discussed this, we said no to tasers. The, uh, but that was a year and a half ago, I guess. And, but the police, uh, report, what do you call it, the, uh, policy was never changed to that effect. So since then, my understanding is that there are them officers out with tasers with them, is that correct?
That is correct.
We've not had any incidents whatsoever that I'm aware of with tasers.
None whatsoever, since, since I've been here, of course, I've been that long, but, you know, there's a couple officers before me that have been here for a few, and they, they're carried, so.
Uh, is Wayne Frazier qualified?
He carries a dual.
Okay, so he's been here a long, and everybody else, huh? But I know the policy states we can carry it, but I'm gonna bring it up to y'all, just to see what we're on.
Yeah, because it was an issue and brought up or whatever, I didn't want it to be, I know, 'cause we, we voted as a council, it may not be the same members here and everything, but the city voted at some point in time to not use them. So I didn't want to say, yeah, go ahead and use them without y'all knowing and discussing it.
Can we play?
No, that's their personal, I don't know.
I don't think it's an issue of paying for them or using them, I think it's, we had this discussion before. And, uh, it's, it's a medical issue, number one, 'cause if you've had somebody with heart stents, or somebody with a medical issue, it's none of the medical support, industry supports, none, none, zero support, tas, tas just don't do it at all.
But Dawn, my, my point, I, you brought that point up before, and I'm gonna argue that one, because you've got somebody with a medical problem, and you taser them, yeah, it may kill them, but you've got somebody with a medical problem and you shoot them, you're gonna kill them. You're gonna kill them either way, you know what I'm saying?
I, I'll argue that particular point, because the thing is, is the officers, we've had some, just some terrible incidences in the state of Texas where they use the tasers, and the tasers is kind of a staged event. Taser, taser, and then shoot. If they wouldn't have had to taser, I, I don't think that would escalated to the situation it did before. And I use the US military as, as it is. The US military doesn't allow it at all. The US military says, you will never shoot any of our soldiers with a taser, it's absolutely not allowed. And if the US military says that our soldiers aren't tough enough, and that they don't agree with it, that's a big statement, because they've done a lot, the military's done a lot of testing on that. They said, you're not gonna do it, it's, it is against US government policy to use tasers. And then if you wanna go further, I'd go on this for a long, long time.
I'll give you a minute or two. I mean, I'm not gonna go on for hours on this, I mean, I, I do wanna limit it. 'Cause I'm sure a lot of people have stuff to say, but feel free, yeah.
No, no, uh, uh, go ahead, since, since obviously I can say a lot, I will let somebody else, go ahead, we'll, we'll counterpoint this.
Well, I see a hand raised, so.
I was on the city council last time it brought it up with, uh, Donnie Malone.
Yeah.
And I, I was in favor of it at the time, because like I said, I would rather have the police officers take out a non-lethal weapon versus lethal weapon any time. But on your point, if an officer raises his voice, I'm gonna comply. If an officer raises his voice, places hands on his weapon, I'm gonna comply. If an officer has to take out his weapon, it's gone beyond all those points, to the point where you said, if he's gotta use a taser on someone with a heart attack, they weren't complying in the first place. They weren't complying in the first place, right? At no point were they complying. In a military base, we all know, when you get pulled out, when you get pulled over, you're gonna get shot before you do anything, so you always comply. Everything's about compliance.
I agree with all of that, uh, but the thing is, is- But the, what I don't agree with, though, is the death rate by tasers, because I was reading an article in the Frankston Citizen, and it was labeled as non-lethal tasers. They, they make non-lethal tasers?
An officer-
The death rate by tasers in the United States of America exceeds-
An officer tells you to do something, you comply, nothing happens.
That's exactly right.
Compliance.
But the, the tasers aren't the answer, we haven't had-
Well, do you feel that a gun should be used?
Yes, I do.
Instead of a taser?
Yes, I do, I think the guns are more effective, and I-
Okay, well, that's okay, he's got an opinion. Uh, let me take the chief.
Okay, um, I've been an officer eighteen years. And up until two months ago, I was on your side. I didn't want a taser. I was gonna shoot you if you're gonna come mess with me, or you're gonna hurt somebody, that's my mentality. I love the city, I love my job, I honor this place. And I wanna stand before the judge and say, yes, I did everything that I could, used every weapon I had that was non-lethal before I went to my gun. And if I don't come here and present this to y'all, and I shoot somebody, and while I'm talking to the prosecutor, I'm gonna say, well, did you ever even try as a chief, did you try to use, or get your officers to have non-lethal weapons? No, I didn't try, I'm the doctor. Now, just 'cause they go to class doesn't mean they're qualified. They still have to, we, we talked about this, just don't want nobody to get happy on a, you know, taser or something. I was in an incident the other day, I pull out my gun, the guy gets out of the truck, I had no idea, this is my turning point. I had no idea what he had. I have people standing down the street, and I have a gun if somebody doesn't have anything. Before, well, I didn't know he didn't have anything. But what does it look like if I shoot this guy, and he didn't have nothing? Opposed to if I have a non-lethal weapon? I would rather do a taser now, before my gun. Don't get me wrong, my gun isn't too far for me to get, pull it out, I have no problem taking somebody's life, within reason, if I need to save my life or something. But again, the stats may be high, that somebody dies because they've been tasered. The stats are also high, but they're not in writing, when you can talk to multiple officers and say, you pull out a gun, the guy's not gonna comply. You pull out a taser, they're most likely to comply. We have tons, well, I've had- We've had tons, I've had tons of, so, I have tons of officers that have guys coming at them, and the guy's just shooting, because he doesn't have anything. What do we look like if we shoot him? And the guy's being, but once we pull out the taser, even the big six, four, three-hundred-pound guy gets down on the ground like that. That is a stat that I can't prove, but that's a stat that we have from other officers, and I want to take it credible enough to do it.
If you shoot someone with a taser and drops on the ground, what do you do next?
Well, I sure hope he stays there.
That's a good point, because if you have somebody from the medical community, is, if he has a adverse, if, if, if he moved when you were shooting him in the taser, and you actually, you accidentally shot him in the eyeball, and the other one's in his shoulder, and he's dropped to the ground, what do you do then? Well, you're not medically equipped to, basically, you're gonna sit there and watch him twitch, and if he dies, he dies.
I'm not a medical...
Well, the same thing if you shoot him with a bullet.
He's shooting with a bullet, he's gonna die.
Because it's, because the taser is easier to use, and you're not understanding my point, the taser is easier to use, you're talking about stiff type of things there. Because if you pull out, if you pull out the gun, the gun is a serious thing.
I think what happens, uh, Dawn, when you get qualified to use a taser, to get qualified to use a taser, you must be tasered yourself. Every officer who's qualified will be tasered, so they know what it feels like.
But that doesn't mean that people are shooting.
So it doesn't mean, so it means if this officer is gonna pull a taser out, he knows exactly what he's gonna do with it.
But he doesn't know the person he's shooting.
He doesn't have to know the person he's shooting, he's doing it to stop that person from doing what they're doing wrong.
And are the tasers effective a hundred percent of the time?
No, sir.
There you go.
That's what you decide on.
But if we use the gun...
Okay.
If it's not effective, then that's where the gun comes in, but I'm not gonna, I mean, I know we can go this all day long, I mean, I got just as much, and I want to be able to go home, and I, I don't want to take nobody's life, and, and that's been a blessing in my life, in my career that I had it. And now, if I take the life on a taser, at least I know I used a less lethal weapon, and...
But it's still lethal.
But it's not intended to kill anybody.
But it was just an accident, it still killed him.
He should have listened to the officer's orders in the first place.
Okay, let me, uh, put this up here, uh, Dan Clark, have a hand raise.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
The other night I was in a situation, I was by myself on patrol, went to Panorama Park in the bay, I had four males that I have seen in the city before, at the stores and things. I am a female police officer, I can handle myself to a point, but if I carried a taser, and one of those gentlemen come towards me, going to kill me with a knife or anything, first, I have that taser that I can use that's not lethal in my book. My gun is my second option, to defend myself, being a female by myself on patrol. So there, a lot of people say, okay, would you rather use your gun or use your taser? I would use a taser to defend myself against someone, to protect myself, to go home at the end of the day safely. So I know you've got your opinion, Mr. Weaver, but if a man's coming at me that's six foot tall, and I'm five-five, two-hundred pounds, I'm gonna shoot him with a taser. And if that does not stop him, my next option is my gun, because I am going home to my family at the end of the day. So, in my opinion, we need tasers in this department, for our officers to carry for safety, and our guns as our second option to be able to use.
If the taser's not effective, and, correct me if I'm wrong, you're just gonna piss him off.
I have peppers.
And then you have, and then, for the time that you pissed him off and your taser's not been effective, if it didn't kill him and you just pissed him off, how quick can you draw that gun?
Very quickly.
You're drawing the gun to begin with.
I can drop that taser and pull my gun just as fast.
Okay, um...
Now, just that one. I, I consider carrying the gun as part of the wild, wild west, you know, who gets out faster? But, I've said this to the officers and I'll say to anybody, there might be a time that we wouldn't get our, excuse my language, our butts kicked out here, and we have to take it. If the guy's coming out, it's because he didn't go down with a taser, and he hits us, you know, before we can pull the gun out, we're gonna have to take that hit, but we're still gonna have to figure out a way in our training to be able to get that gun, that knife, the gun out fast. But that just goes part of the job, this is a job that we chose, and we want every possible weapon that we can have to defend ourselves. And if it's time to go, it's time to go, it's just the way this is how it is.
Let me know what your thoughts.
Yeah, I'd like to bring it back to the council now.
If somebody's coming at you with a knife, shoot them. Kill their asses. Don't worry about a taser.
There you go, right.
If you get, if a guy gets out of a car and he's very belligerent, he's wanting to argue and maybe fight you, then taser him. I, I, I love tasers. I don't want to get hit with one. I can't really, but weapons for a police officer to have, there's a time for a taser, there's a time for a gun.
Absolutely.
And then, I, I, I did not know about the stents and stuff. You hit me, I did, because I got your dead. But if I need tasering, shoot, taser me. I, I think they're great for police officers.
United Nations, if they're outlawed, they're outlawed. United Nations is not allowed, they consider them a weapon of torture, you can't use them in the United Nations, the medical community...
The United Nations does, I'd like to succeed in the United Nations.
That's true.
They're running the caravan up here, too.
Medical community...
Let's keep it within the realms of Coffee City, and we don't need to talk about the world and how everything else gets done everywhere else, I'm concerned with how Coffee City's gonna handle this issue. So, Terry, do you have any, uh, comments on how you feel about...
Well, I just got a question, not really a comment, if you taser somebody, how long does this electrical shot last? Do you keep pulling the trigger, or...
Yes, sir.
As long as you keep pulling the trigger, you keep killing the juice?
If you don't take it off, yes, sir.
As soon as you pull off the trigger, the episode is over?
Yes, sir.
If you don't have the person.
And then when you qualify, what, it's for five seconds, right?
Yeah.
Or how long is it?
Five.
Five seconds? Tell for five seconds on them to get qualified.
If you go shot in the right place.
Um...
And your medical...
Mr. Runge, you have any comments, one way or the other?
Well, once again, we've come down to this, I would like to make a motion and we accept the police department to use tasers. That's my comment. I will say.
Okay, well, I have a motion on the table and a second, all in favor of using tasers, all opposed.
We can, we can readdress this if we see something we don't like.
Anytime.
I'll put it on the next agenda, I'll put it on the next open forum, I'm gonna fave it, and y'all are wrong.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second, and we've had a vote, uh, three, two, one. Four. Okay, um... And, number twelve. We'll move on to number thirteen. Discuss an act upon allowing the police department to use a K-9 for sniffing out drugs only. Uh, this is, kind of worded this, but I didn't word it correctly, this dog belongs to a potential reserve, the dog is not trained to pursue or attack, but only to sniff out drugs. Uh, I've checked with TML in the past, and the liability cost would be around a hundred and forty dollars a year. Again, I'd call our new police chief to maybe explain how this came about and why we're talking about it.
We have a highly qualified candidate that owns her own German Shepherd. She's, uh, working full-time right now, at the ISD, and she just wants to go down to reserve, uh, and be able to train her dog. Unfortunately, ISD won't let her, or give her the hours to train, uh, the dog and do whatever she needs to do for the K-9. So that's where I come in. Strictly, she just wasn't trained in time, they just mostly sniff out drugs. She hasn't been processed all the way, because we want to see, she wants to see if it would pass, if it passes, then we can take it forward. But other than that, she's just gonna help us sniff out drugs. She pays everything out of her own pocket, her prop, her training, nothing comes out of our pocket.
Does she have, um, if she were to work for us or whatever, do we need equipment, any more special equipment or anything?
No, ma'am, we don't need anything.
To carry a dog in the car, or...
None whatsoever.
Would she use her own equipment, or...
She has everything, she has her, her car with her, everything that she needs for the dog.
With a cage.
Cage, there you go.
And so we can do our, much like we do Wayne Frazier, put a...
Exactly.
Use her own vehicle, put a, have a waiver of reliability.
Yes.
Sorry. Couldn't she not use the K-9?
She could also use the K-9 car that we have, it's a quick car, but, uh, it'd either
I, I mean, has this dog been used before in the police class, be it a shepherd?
Yes, uh, seven years or nine, eight and a half years of ISD, so whatever they've done in there.
What is ISD?
It depends what it's just. Uh, that's what she, that's what, he, the dog, so...
It's an old shepherd.
Yeah. No, she's been there, I'm walking, sorry, let me... She's been there eight years, the dog is, I think, four. She had a different way.
A late shepherd.
She had one before, and that didn't work out for this thing, but when they did away with that program, she put up her own time.
I do understand that Frankston's police department now has the dog, and it's been doing quite well, of course, catching.
Can, can I interject?
Sure.
I know the handler down there, they have had, I know, seven busts, the dog was instrumental in it, and a lot of times, there was one, in fact, that, um, I think it was Cooney or it was DPS, wanted to call them, and a car that they suspected, suspected drugs, they had the dog walk the car, dog acknowledged that there were drugs, and they gave him a cost search card, what was it, Chris, twenty thousand?
Yeah, they get a lot, I don't remember the exact amount.
Twenty thousand dollars worth of, uh, duck, uh, trucks off the street because of the dog.
Well, I, I always feel like anything we can do to help prevent drugs from being in the city growing anymore, we should, we should probably work at it, I don't know if y'all have had anybody that you've loved be addicted to drugs, but it's not a, it's not a good thing. And so anything we can do to get rid of drugs, drug dealers, I say we should try, any way we can. But as far as, um, I have on here, discuss an act upon allowing this to be used or done, um, how do y'all feel about not doing that? Do you want to ask more questions, or?
I don't know whether I have any issues with it, I just, I would have concerns with them taking the dog over like into the bay and walking around outside. The, uh, I mean, some of the places he's talking about, I don't know whether that's, how that would be perceived by the county.
The K-9 was strictly used for traffic, that's where it's coming in, but as far as going to houses and stuff like that, we don't, unless it's that house here, Coffee City limits, where we can get a search warrant and execute one, then the K-9 would be beneficial. Uh, but other than that, it's just strictly out in traffic when we need to have consent, we don't have consent from people, from the violence.
Hey, the dog sniffed something, what do you do next? Do you have to call it a warrant to, to...
No, once, once the dog gets a hit, it's, that's our problem, we're, we're free to go, uh, on the vehicle. The dog is just, is the consent, that's what he's trained to give us consent.
So, it's a dog's turn, quick with a taser.
Good one, one for Dawn. Okay, uh, so, can I have a motion that we allow the police department to use a K-9, should it become available?
I'll say.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, it's unanimous. Okay, um...
We think the dog won.
Oh, mayor's report, a second, number fourteen, mayor's report. Uh, I would just like to say, we did have held our election, we were not able to canvass the votes tonight because the official account was not in. I would like to report that the, um, proposition for the sales tax did, um, win.
Unofficially.
Is in favor of that, uh, so, I'm sure y'all have already read about that in the newspaper, but just to add that. Um, Doug, is there anything that you can think of?
I would just add the word unofficially in there.
Unofficial, it's an unofficial count, yes.
Officially, unofficially.
Judge Anne.
And George Anne actually won in the unofficial count, George Anne Wright from House of One in the unofficial count, uh, she had a vote of, uh, sixty-two to, um, Edward McDaniel's fifty-nine. So it was, it was a narrow race, then, uh, George Wright won that race. So, should the official vote come in and not change anything, we will get used, we will canvass them and square in the winner at our December 20th. Um, okay, can I have the EDC report, please?
Yes, we started at the month of October, and a hundred and eighty, a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred, thirty-four dollars and forty-four cents. We paid the electric bill for the sign in front of the business center, uh, total of one hundred, thirty-four dollars and twenty-two cents, we paid the EDC secretary three hundred and fifty dollars. We received the rent and the electric on number three and four for Pizza Pro, eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. We paid for mowing at Lake Palestine Center, two hundred and twenty dollars. We received the rent for August for number two, five hundred dollars. Our water bill at the Lake Palestine Center was one hundred, eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Received rent for number one for nine hundred dollars. Rent and number two for September was five hundred dollars. Sales tax was four thousand, four hundred, twenty-eight dollars and forty cents. Bank miles were thirty-two dollars and seventy cents. I'm going to Basta, I'm leaving tomorrow afternoon, um, the motel, the evening, or the class is two hundred, fifty-five dollars for two days, and my motel will be two hundred, seventy-three dollars and forty cents. We have a total of one hundred, sixty-one thousand, three hundred, sixty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Any questions?
The dates at the very bottom there are ten-four, that should be eleven-four.
No, it's ten-four, I should have put it at that.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I barely made it in class, they were ninety percent taken up, and I'm not staying at the motel where the class is being, because I did not win in time, I should have gotten in earlier. Okay, um, the hotel occupancy tax, from October, the, uh, hotel brought in, motor inn brought in one thousand, thirteen dollars and eleven cents. The resort brought three hundred, sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents, for a total of one thousand, three hundred, seventy-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. We paid the sign master for the sign, the two signs that we are doing, two hundred dollars. We're paying our webmaster, two hundred dollars. Our Frankston Citizen ad was two hundred and fifty-six dollars. We now have forty-one thousand, three hundred, fifty-five dollars and nine cents in the hot account. Any questions?
Mayor, I have a question for the EDC. How much, uh, with this new RV park coming in, how much is EDC projected to be coming in from that income from that park? Do we know yet?
We don't know.
I would venture to say that there's gonna be very little, this, it's not a rental of a place, it's, they're renting a space, the people own their RVs and come in there and park them, so there's no hotel tax.
They may be buying groceries and beer, whatever, so it might help from that standpoint.
That'll still, yeah. Oh, well.
They'll be able to tell that after a period of time, right? See if we get a bump from that.
There's only gonna be twenty slots there. There's only gonna be twenty slots there, mayor.
Twenty slots?
They said it was twenty-nine, it's only twenty?
Tommy said twenty, so...
Twenty slots, five hundred a pop?
I think so, my apartment, too.
That's twenty more people purchasing stuff in this town.
Amen.
Okay, anybody else have any more questions? Okay, thank you, Sandy.
Municipal court report. Okay, so fines collected thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred, three dollars and fifty cents. The GH test collections, eight thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and forty-two cents. The in-house warrant collection, four thousand, three hundred, four dollars and thirty cents. And the fire chief cleared ten warrants. The new case filed, one hundred and thirty-five. Compliance dismissals after driver safety course thirty-nine, after deferred disposition nineteen, after proof of financial responsibility nine. All other transportation codes dismissed, ten. Let's see, I think there's more on that page. The community service, there were three, and satisfied by jail credit set.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the court report? Okay, thank you. We have the police report, please.
Council, for the month of October, we had twenty-six calls for service. Out of those twenty-six, there was five accidents, twelve agency assists, one citizen matter, nine loose livestocks, nine motors assist, two possession, assault assistance, two possession of marijuana, two public intoxication, one suspicious person, three suspicious vehicles, and fourteen arrests. We've also had a hundred and sixty-eight citations, fifty-two warnings, only two hundred and twenty total contacts.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the police department? All right, thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
We have the fire report, please.
I was gonna apologize for when you said write a ticket anywhere, you just blurted it out in my brain, just again. I just, I just know I can't write a ticket. They just have to turn it to that JP or that judge that's in that jurisdiction. So I apologize if you blurted it out. All right, sixteen calls, thank goodness, last month. One house fire, three grass, six medical, three trees, one boat, one good intent, and I don't even remember what that was, one NBA. Our past events was National Night Out, which I think went well. We did a pretty good turnout. We kind of combined with Frankston. Northeast Texas School went fine until the lightning hit. Henshaw County Fire School was not its best. Square Fair was rained out. And the reports I received from my vacation spot, from the garage, the track today went pretty well.
Yeah.
So... I was talking about Square Fair. That's been rescheduled for December the fifteenth. The booths are gonna be like from ten to five, and Santa Claus is gonna arrive around six, a little parade. We have a lot of people who already make plans. I don't know. We'll try to get down there and support it, but...
What day did you say?
December the fifteenth. So... And I guess the report we turned in prior to, the packet breakfast went all right. I spent a lot of time back in the back. I just spent a lot of time up front. For first timers, I mean, we didn't get some of the local veterans like I thought we would have, as always. To show up. But I mean, for the first time, I think it went well. I don't have a count, because I have not left my house on Saturday afternoon. The only reason I'm here was to see y'all this evening, so...
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
We will get there. We will have it for y'all later on. Holiday meal is December the eighth at six p.m. It's potluck. We're still needing that head count by the fifteenth from the department end. Police team. And that's... The other thing we're working on is the, we got a brush truck grant for about forty-two thousand. Our part of it's four thousand. And we're working on that. We have to pay forty-two, and then the state will reimburse us thirty-eight. So we're working, we're exploring some options on that. I hope to have more news for that in December's council meeting.
Okay.
See you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the fire department? Okay, let's go to number nineteen. We need a motion. To adjourn, please. Have a motion and a second. All in favor. Be unanimous.